All right. So I want to adjourn the special meeting of City Council at 6:19 PM. There is nothing to report. And I want to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting on Wednesday, July the 25th, 2018, at 6:19 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay list or replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, July 27th, at 1 PM, and Monday, July 30th, also at 1 PM. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. Those are the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room, provided the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suwen.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite the Chair of the Multicultural Committee to come on down, Mohinder Singh, and please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, just as for all.
Thank you, sir. And at the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, we always like to ask the members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. And Councilmember Hume?
Yes, Mayor. Just as we observe this moment of silence, I'd like to ask folks to keep some people's families in their hearts. We lost some community members here recently, Rick Schreiber, who was longtime Lions Club member, very active in the community. And as well, I'd like to close the meeting in honor of Sue Johnson, wife of former county supervisor Toby Johnson, who passed away recently.
Thank you, Councilman. If you could, please. Thank you very much. I have an agenda in front of me. I'll entertain a motion. Got a motion? We have a second. You got a second? All in favor? Aye. Oppose abstention? All right, next item.
We have no items for the closed session under Section 3, which will take us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring August 2018 as Cultural Diversity Awareness Month, and Presentation of Certificates of Recognition for the Service of Prior Members to the Multicultural Committee.
Okay, excellent. If I could invite the honorees to step on up to the podium, and also the Chair of the Multicultural Committee. And I believe other members are here as well, right? Why don't you guys all come on up? So we have a proclamation here from the City Council, Cultural Diversity Awareness Month, August 2018. The Multicultural Committee will celebrate Elk Grove's diversity with the Seventh Annual Multicultural Festival on August 25th at Elk Grove Regional Park. And whereas the Multicultural Committee is charged with providing guidance to the City Council on issues impacting multicultural communities, and whereas the Multicultural Committee seeks to increase diversity awareness and education beyond the multicultural festival through events, forums, exchanges throughout the month of August, in collaboration with other agencies, businesses, and organizations that promote peace and understanding. And whereas the Multicultural Committee strives to promote greater community unity, civic pride within the city of Elk Grove. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of August 2018 as Cultural Diversity Awareness Month in the city of Elk Grove, and encourages all business entities, the media, the Elk Grove citizenry, to participate in cultural awareness events and programs during this designated month, to take the city's diversity pledge, to read the council's 2017 proclamation declaring Elk Grove as no place for hate, and to take time to appreciate the ethnic and cultural diversity that exists within the city of Elk Grove, signed by the entire City Council on the 25th day, July 2018. I'd like to invite the whole entire City Council to step on down to take some photos. Let me just add that we have two honorees, members of the Multicultural Committee, Marie Mertz. Marie was selected to serve her community as one of the founding members of the Multicultural Committee, appointed on October 12, 2011. And the city of Elk Grove is privileged to have benefited from Marie's talents and dedication. Her efforts have left a mark that forged the purpose and direction of the Multicultural Committee. Marie continues to be on a path that builds a strong history of community involvement, serving with the highest levels of respect and esteem. She will be greatly missed. I don't know where you're going, but we -- well, congratulations. Yana was selected to serve her community on the Multicultural Committee, appointed on January 14, 2015. The city of Elk Grove is privileged to have benefited from Yana's talents and dedication. Her efforts have left an incredible mark that have forged the dedication of the Multicultural Committee. Yana, you have a long history of contribution in community involvement, serving at the highest levels of -- with respect and esteem. You will be missed greatly. Congratulations for your service, and thank you very much. If I can get this off. There you go.
Thank you.
But before all of you leave, let's hang on for one photo. There's the resolution that I left on the dais. I'm going to go grab it. I'd like to present this to the Chair of the Multicultural Committee, Mohinder Singh.
On the behalf of the entire Multicultural Committee, we want to thank the Council and the entire community for recognizing month of August as the Cultural Diversity Awareness Month. And also, we want to thank the Council and the community for recognizing the two former committee members, Marie Mertz and Yana Shobert. Both of them continue to serve as volunteers to the committee and dedicating their time to serve the greater community. And just as a friendly reminder, please attend to everyone, attend our annual multicultural festival, which is on August 25th, on Saturday, in the Elk Grove Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your service. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 5, General Public Comment.
And we have two members of the public sign up to speak. First speaker is Ruby Parsley. Follow Ruby is Lynn Weet.
My name is Ruby Parsley, and I've lived in Elk Grove for 55 years. And I'm here tonight asking for a traffic signal to be installed in Elk Grove Foreign Road in Laheya Drive, across from the old shopping center. And I just have a few things to say. The traffic in Elk Grove and at the intersection in Laheya is not as heavy as you -- the shopping center is not as busy, but Elk Grove Foreign Road is. We had a child that was killed there crossing Elk Grove Foreign Road several years ago, and then a traffic signal was put there. In the year 2000, one of my neighbors decided to contact the Department of Public Works, asking for a pedestrian light to be installed. And he was acknowledged by the department, saying that we should have an intersection -- we should have a -- excuse me, we should have a light there. And they said that they would evaluate it, and they had indicated that the traffic volume at the intersection warranted a signal. And he was told that it would be prioritized and included in the list to wait the funds and the implementation. And this was the same year that Elk Grove became a city. And the census at that time was approximately 76,665. And the census as of last year, 2017, was approximately 171,844. So for 18 years, we've been waiting for that stoplight. In January of this year, I called our traffic engineer and asked him about putting a stoplight, a traffic light there on Elk Grove Foreign Road. And he said it wasn't feasible at the time, and it was too expensive. So then I called him again in the spring and asked him the same question. And he told me they didn't have the funding, and they had two other areas that needed it more than we do. So after sending the letter to him, though, the first time, I didn't hear from him, and I had to keep calling him. That's why I'm coming to you. I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I think it's important for the safety of the people that live off Laheya and in the Walnut Orchard. Speed is a problem along Elk Grove Foreign Road, and to my knowledge, no one has informed me that they would do anything to make it safer. One of the things, too, is the way the wall comes down the Elk Grove Foreign Road. If you're -- anyone is driving next to the wall, the person that's pulling out of the intersection of Laheya cannot see that car until it's upon them. So we have had some near misses and some accidents there. But I would just ask that you would consider this, and I'd appreciate it so much. And thank you.
Mr. Murdoch, can you, yeah, work with her on that? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, our next speaker is Lynn Weet.
So I have several comments I want to make tonight. I did put in a records request to get the total that was spent on the Amgen tour, but I did go ahead and go through the warrants, and it's really pretty interesting. Takes me a little time to do that because the print's very, very tiny. But I did add up, and of course, I'm hopeful that our hotels were filled with others and who we paid for, but between the hotels that we funded here, we gave them approximately $80,000 of our taxpayer money. So once again, I want to see if this is really fiscally responsible for our city to be doing that when we have so many needs, as we've just heard from a resident here within our community that would benefit the residents. The second thing I want to do is, as a citizen planner, is bring up something that I came across looking at the Planning Commission staff report of last week. We finally have a SEPA plan, and it was supposedly supposed to be a really great plan, and we were going to correct our jobs, housing imbalance, and keep those employment centers and have some firm standards in land use planning. And I see now, before we even really start anything other than us funding that initial infrastructure out there, that we are going to have a community plan amendment and special planning area amendment. So I hope that you will follow the recommendation of our Planning Commission and deny these changes, because I know that developers, landowners, residents worked several years to come up with something that was supposed to be great for our city, and I would hate to see it already being eroded before we even get anything out there other than infrastructure. And of course, the comments about why this particular developer wants to do this, I found interesting, too, in light of some other issues that have been presented to you. And it was to reduce the size of the office property to be more marketable, because once again, they're determining that they want to build something that will happen now and what will sell, and it's not office. They want to build more houses. So my concern is if we drift into honoring the flexibility of our SEPA area, that we will end up all houses out there and no job sites. Sometimes you have to wait for the market to catch up.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
That'll take us to Section 6, the General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My pleasure to present this report to you this evening. There are a number of items on here, so I'll try to go through them relatively briefly. But just a note to members of the public that may be watching at home or in the audience, this information is available on the city's website. On the front page, there's a link under City Manager Reports, as well as all the archived reports are available as well. Mosquito spraying update over the last couple nights. The mosquito abatement district has been spraying mosquitoes. We've gotten a few phone calls from residents, but we've been sending out information through our social media contacts, and it's our understanding is that spraying is now concluded. This Thursday is the beginning of the Strauss 31st Annual Strauss Festival. The promenade begins at 7:30 PM, and the show begins at 8:15 PM. Parking is $10. For more information, visit StrausFestival.com. The draft general plan release for public review is scheduled for Friday, July 27th. And that includes the draft environmental impact report, the draft climate action plan, the draft transportation analysis guidelines, all released at the same time. Materials will be available on the city's website. Be a public comment period. They'll be open for 60 days through September 26, 2018. Staff will be presenting an overview of the materials and draft schedule for Planning Commission and City Council review at the August 16 Planning Commission meeting and the August 22 City Council meeting. More details are available on the city's website. The American Leadership Forum will deliver a second training session on implicit bias to members of our Multicultural Committee on Monday, July 30th, at 6 o'clock in the council chambers. This is a makeup session for all those who were not able to attend. So after this Monday, all of our members of our Multicultural Committee will have attended that session, and will begin the Phase 2, which is going to continue to train and look for opportunities to engage the community through that process. National Night Out is coming up. The Elk Grove Police Department and the Consumer's Fire Department will join responders in cities throughout the country on August 7th in recognizing National Night Out as a way to strengthen neighborhoods and prevent crime. Officers will visit gatherings scheduled throughout the city for a listing of scheduled National Night Out events. In the city, contact the Crime Prevention Unit at 478-8122. Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge update. We're making great progress. We're going to submit the final application for that coming up in August. It's been a great process having staff go through that, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll be a competitive applicant for the $5 million grand prize. New garbage and street sweeping notification tool. An ongoing effort to improve service to Elk Grove residents. The Public Works Department has added a free notification service that provides residents with email, text, and phone reminders for their trash or street sweeping day. It will even tell residents whether it's a recycle week or green waste week, so they know which cart to put out. Residents can sign up for the Waste Wizard tool on the garbage and recycling page of the city's website. The city and town planner calendar are hosting a photo contest on Instagram. Submit your best shot taken within the city using the hashtag EGTownPlanner19 by August 19th. See official contest rules and details at the city website. Housing survey is in progress. City is partnering with the Sacramento Valley Fair Housing Collaborative to collect information on housing challenges in the city. Residents can share their experiences and enter to win $100 Visa gift card by participating in a short online survey. Details are available on the city's website. Just a reminder about continuing roadwork on a couple of projects. Temporary closures on Poppy Ridge Road at Big Horn Boulevard through December, lane closures on Laguna Boulevard at Laguna Park Drive and Franklin Boulevard through August. Many of the updates on our projects are available here. Go through here really quick. Continuing to make progress on the projects that we have under construction, including Civic Center, Animal Shelter, and Camera Road. The Grant Line, Mosher Bradshaw and Waterman Mosher, city staff has nearly completed negotiations on the MOU and plans to take this MOU to the City Council in August. Updates on our CIP projects are available on the city's website, so encourage members of the public to go and check it out. And that includes my report to the City Council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? There are no questions? All right, let's go into Council report. Let's start with Councilman Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been kind of crazy between personal time going around the country, and back home, there was a great event we had Sunday night at the Jerry Fox Swimming Pool. The Chief Noblet was there as well. The Flying Brave Foundation for Young Men and Women with Autism hosted an event of swimming and barbecue for people with disabilities. I had a real soft spot for not only those with disabilities, but this group of young men and women as well. And I know the chief has become real close to a lot of the families and young men and women, too. So it's a great event, great to see them out there having fun and just being who they are, and they're, you know, just such a great group of people and families. Other than that, most everything's been more personal the last few weeks, and so I'll move on to the next person.
Okay, Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the boards and commission that I've -- that I'm on are on summer break, so I had much to report in that. And like Councilmember Detrick, I've been spending most of my time with family while I can during the summer, so I don't have anything.
Excellent. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I participated in the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce Leadership Elk Grove program, spoke to the group of folks, and had a little question and answer period with them. So it was a good group of people and a very nice way to spend a morning. Hopefully, it was informative for them. Had an RT meeting on Monday night. Nothing to report specific to Elk Grove, but I will report that in Citrus Heights, where RT has launched its first microtransit program, they've seen ridership for that route from traditional, the way they used to do it, to now this more of an on-demand service, go from 30 to 200. So it's been a real success, and we're now just expanding it down to the Franklin area. The Vice Mayor and I participated in the Construction Careers Ad Hoc Committee meeting yesterday, and I think that was a very productive discussion, drilling down on apprenticeship programs and how to incorporate them in the city and get to something that makes sure that we have a qualified workforce performing public works projects. And this morning, regional sanitation board meeting with the mayor, and I'll let him report if he comes up with anything of more significance, but it didn't seem to be anything that specific to Elk Grove. But I will say it was nice to receive a report on the Echo Water project and showed that the expenses to date are coming in under the original projection, so hopefully that trend continues. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that never happens, so that's pretty good. As Councilman Hume mentioned, we took part in the Ad Hoc Committee meeting, also participated in the Chamber of -- Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce Leadership Elk Grove session, taking Q and A about just what it's like to be in elected office and our challenges there. Because we're a city, you know, we don't move as fast as the private sector, so there's a lot of talk about autonomous vehicles and how it's coming down the pike. And so we want to make sure we're ready, or at least having the right conversations about those. So to that end, myself and some of the staff, City Manager and others, went out to talk to Go Momentum, which is partnering with Contra Costa County Transportation Authority. And they've got a -- there's a -- they're using a naval base out there, a lot of the tech companies, to test autonomous vehicles. And it was interesting to find out what their challenges are and what their -- how they're looking to see the industry develop in the future. So we'll continue to have those conversations and make sure we're prepared for the future. I dropped by the Summer Fest for Running for Rett event at Summer Fest, and while it was a good event, it was very -- it was very unfortunate. We had someone that was injured with a tree branch falling down, and given the size of the branch, I'm just happy that no deaths were involved. But so it's kind of a sad moment in the whole event. Went to visit Creator X, which was put on by David Garibaldi and Sean Sullivan, giving back to our community. He brought in, together, the duo brought in some professions, professionals working for Pixar and other well-known corporations to teach the kids about art, and whether it was writing or graphic design. And that was a very -- it's very inspirational, actually, to see them in their -- at Children High School in their darkroom. Hopefully, they can expand that next year, and I'd love to help them do that. Went to the Chamber, Elk Grove Chamber Mixer, to support and celebrate nonprofits. It was a great turnout as well at that event. And dropped in on the American Legion Post 233 fundraiser they had over at the Texas Roadhouse barbecue. Tomorrow, we've got Library Authority, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Had the opportunity to participate in that very same fundraiser. Stake there is always excellent, so I thoroughly enjoyed that. Had an opportunity to participate in the Elk Fest. I have had a number of key to city presentations, and also participated in the Creator X, which certainly was inspirational, and I felt that I was surrounded by celebrities, all right? That was pretty impressive.
Yep.
Sanitation, nothing additional to report other than what Councilmember Hume has indicated, and I have air quality tomorrow. That is it. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, consent. I want to go ahead and then pull 8.8. I see that two members of the public are sign up to speak, and then I'll be open to move the rest of the consent items.
I'll move the rest of the agenda.
Second? Motion, second. All in favor? Aye. Close abstention? All right, 8.8.
I'm Mayor. Bob Murdoch, Public Works Director. So the item before you is a request for a preferential parking zone. The city in the municipal code allows for essentially permit parking in instances where residential areas are impacted by surrounding land uses, such as commercial or institutional. So it's difficult to follow, but this is Mini Circle right here, and this is Elk Grove High School. You've got Elk Grove Florin here on the east side and Valley Oaks. And what has happened is you have a number of students from Elk Grove High School happen to be starting to park or have been parking on Mini Circle, because evidently it's -- they perceive it to be more convenient. And under the municipal code, if at least 75% of the residents on that street submitted petition for essentially permit parking, Public Works brings it to the City Council. Ultimately, it's the City Council's decision whether to approve it or not. There are 36 residences on Mini Circle. 29 of those residences, or 81%, signed the petition. So given that there is adequate parking at the high school, it's just the students don't seem to be inclined to use it, we've -- our recommendation is to go ahead and approve the preferential We've, our recommendation is to go ahead and approve the preferential parking and to issue parking permits. And essentially what that means is if you park on the street on Mini Circle, you must have a permit. If you park in your driveway, you don't need a permit. And so there, we issue one permit per car associated, you know, registered to that house and along with one visitor permit to be used for each resident. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, a couple of questions. The first is, what kind of interface have we had with the school district with respect to sort of their traffic flow patterns at the time of, when school lets out? And part of why I ask that is if you look at the, what would be the easternmost portion of Mini Circle that has the barricade, they funnel all the traffic in and out of that one gate. And there's a gate further to the west that maybe if they dissipated some of the traffic that way, it would flow easier and students wouldn't be inclined to park somewhere else.
What I'd do is I'll defer that to my traffic engineer, Ryan Chapman, and ask him to come up and, because he's dealt with the residents on this issue.
And what about with the school district?
That's, I'm going to have him answer that question.
Okay.
Ryan Chapman, Public Works. There hasn't been any communication with the high school on this issue. I have traded a few emails on it, though.
Okay. I would imagine that the reason why they funnel all the traffic through the one gate is a security issue, but if we could explore that they couldn't disperse that traffic a little more throughout that other gate, I think that might help solve some of the problems. I spoke with one of the residents on Mini Circle who lives at the western end of it, and his concern was that the barricade on the eastern end of Mini Circle then funnels all the traffic to the western end. And so he feels like he's getting a greater impact than the folks maybe at the eastern end. Can you remind me, and I know this was before both of our times, but can you remind me why that barricade was placed on Mini Circle? Was that to keep people from coming straight out of the high school and going through Mini Circle as a way of?
Yes, it was actually installed prior to the incorporation of the city, but the intent was to keep traffic from cutting through or trying to use Mini Circle to turn around.
Okay.
The, the way the barricade is set up, people are allowed to exit Mini Circle at that intersection, they just can't enter.
Okay. Those are all my questions for a moment. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Ryan, did you have a chance to meet, there was one resident who opposed it. I have his name here, hold on a second.
Bryce Jeffries.
Bryce. Yeah, Bryce. Did you have a chance to talk with him or meet with him, or did you just get the emails?
No, I actually went out there last week and walked Mini Circle with him and talked about some of his concerns.
And his concerns were more that he thinks it's fair just to leave it the way it is?
Yes, he's opposed to the permit parking zone. He didn't perceive the issue being severe enough as to need it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ryan, it's, I had a conversation with him, it sounded like convenience was his issue was just coming down and picking up a permit. Was there anything else that was compelling?
Like I said, we talked about a number of issues, but I think part of it was just the convenience and having to manage the permit, especially managing the gas permit. And just, he didn't really perceive it as big an issue as some of the other neighbors have.
I guess what I'm trying to get at with that is, what's his compelling reason to objecting to this when almost everyone has agreed to it?
I'm not sure. I mean, like I said, I think a lot of it really just had to do with the perception of how bad the issue was.
I think one of his items was cost and the policy of, you know, maintaining the permits for all the homeowners as well as the cost for, to the city to put it in and the monitoring by the police department.
Okay. Is there anything else that you could add in your conversation with him?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have two speakers signed up to speak. First speaker is Randy Stratton. Following Randy is Bill Martinez.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Of course, I'm here to support the idea of having permit parking. But I've been a resident of Mini Circle for over 30 years, as well as probably about six other residents back there with me that really don't want to come up and speak, so I guess I'm the designated speaker here. And basically, first of all, I'd really like to thank the city for adopting an ordinance that allows residents to regain their residential parking from non-residents. The problem has escalated over the years, and myself and several residents on several occasions have asked the vice principal and the administration to do something about it. Essentially, their response was call the police for cars that are illegally parked, which we did. We've had cars ticketed, the same cars come back and park again on our street. I don't know if the city clerk passed you some of the pictures, but it gets to the point where you cannot park in front of your own house. But I believe creating a limited parking zone will help our problem, and it does not create a hardship for the residents. The permits are free. The hours are from four, oh, excuse me, from eight in the morning till four in the afternoon. After that time, you can park wherever you want. It's limited to Monday through Friday. It's not on the weekends. If you have a party during the day, you can ask for the permit parking zone to be suspended during your party hours. So I think the ordinance is a good tool for residents that are suffering from lack of planning, basically. I also believe it's a broader issue and not unique to Elk Grove High School. Due to the intra-district enrollment policy that was revised in 2010, many years after Elk Grove High School was built, the traffic flow for that school has never been revised or looked at or any kind of study done to incorporate a drop-off zone that doesn't use residential streets. So I urged council to adopt the resolution as a step in correcting the residential problem, parking problem for the residents of Mini Circle. Furthermore, can the city conduct a traffic flow study with recommendations to create safe drop-off zones for students without the use of residential neighborhood streets? With that, I conclude. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Stratton. This is something that I'll be taking to the two-by-two with the school board, and I think it's about time to have that conversation, so, you know.
It'd be nice if you could create a stakeholders meeting and include some residents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Martinez.
And Mayor and City Council, Mr. Martinez, this evening dropped off a thumb drive that had a video clip that he wanted to include with his comments. As I said, it was submitted tonight. Staffs only had an opportunity to look at the video, which looks like a video walkthrough around Mini Circle, but we weren't able to listen to any of the audio, so it hasn't been fully previewed. But Mr. Martinez did submit that. It would be at the discretion of the council if you wanted to see it.
I'm fine with it, so long as there's not any inappropriate message.
No, there's no, it's basically just me walking the neighborhood, showing you. The reason it was submitted today, and I didn't know, first of all, let me back up a minute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for allowing me to speak. I'm opposed to the issue that we're talking about now, which is the permitted parking. I was actually pleased to hear that somebody else was opposed to that issue, so good to not be alone. Really, I wanted to do that video today because I wanted to just take a walk around Mini Circle to show you. And we can show it or not show it. When I previewed it with Brenda over there, it was kind of playing sideways. So maybe you guys can take a look at it as your leisure, or we can play it now. But essentially, when I walked today, which is 11:20 a.m., there were two cars parked on one side of Mini Circle. The big, long side that I live on, there were two cars parked there. And on the far end, there were two cars parked there. So on the entire street, total of six cars. Now, I know school's not in session, so the students aren't parking there. But three of those cars, 100%, one of them was mine, were owned by the residents. So let me go ahead, I've got a prepared statement I would like to read, because I've given it some thought. And hopefully you guys will talk to the school, do some more investigating before you make up your mind on this issue. I'm opposed on it, so if you want to ask me some questions after I've read this, I'll try to answer any questions, but here we go. So my name is Bill Martinez. Me and my family have lived on Mini Circle since July of 2014. I'm here because I'm not for the petition for no parking zone Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 p.m. on Mini Circle. I simply do not believe it's necessary. I expressed that view to Randy, who came around with a petition twice, refusing to sign the petition both times. Again, I think we've all established, it's not about the residents' ability to park on the street. Even, I think when school is in session, you can find some parking somewhere on Mini Circle. It's really about the high school kids parking there. And as I mentioned, we moved there four years ago. We were fully aware that there was a high school around the corner and that there would be traffic in the morning with students walking through the neighborhood on their way to school. If you live anywhere near any kind of a school, be it an elementary, a high school, or junior high school, I mean, you have to kind of expect that. We're all adults here. I think it would be disingenuous to say you would expect to not have that type of, you know, thing that you would have to deal with. We were also made aware that people park on Mini Circle on the Fourth of July to walk down Elk Grove Park. I myself walked down Elk Grove Park to watch the fireworks. Also, people park on Mini Circle for Friday night football games and win the parades that happen on that side of town. None of those things deterred us from purchasing our house in 2014. We knew in buying on Mini Circle that we would have to accept and deal with those things. And I'm here to tell you, my experience, it's not bad. Now, not only do I, have I lived on Mini Circle since 2014, I gotta stop.
Go ahead, Phil.
Okay. But I also work from home. So it's not like, you know, I'm not aware of what goes on in that neighborhood. I work from home, I walk my dog several times a week, all up and down the neighborhood. Yeah, traffic is bad when kids are being taken to and from school and when kids are coming to school, but it settles down. Granted, there are a lot of, you know, teenage cars in the neighborhood, but it's a public neighborhood. It's a public street paid for with tax dollars. And I don't want you to think that I'm pro students parking in the neighborhood. In a very sense, in a very real sense, I'm not. But I am pro their right to park there legally, if they're parked legally, just like any other citizen. And if you were to put a no parking zone, then any, and I heard this stat earlier, and I know it's true, 1,000 or 100,000, you know, 70,000, 844 citizens of Elk Grove would also not be able to park there. I have a gardener that comes by that services my yard. I have a pool guy that comes by and services my pool. I don't want to have to run out and give them a parking permit so that they can, you know, be there for however long and then have to run back out and collect that parking permit and run back out and give it out again. That's a tremendous inconvenience to me and anybody else there. If you look at the video, you know, I walked the neighborhood today, there's not a lot of trash, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and I think it would only be diminished and made uglier by having no parking signs every 10, 15 feet. So just to conclude this, I know I've been speaking for a while. Again, I'm opposed to this, it sounds like there's somebody else that's opposed this. I would like you guys, before you vote on it and say yea or nay, to give it some serious consideration. I don't think I can ask for more than that. Again, I've lived there for five years, or four years. I bought with the full knowledge, you know, that we would have to deal with high school traffic and traffic and people parking for other areas. And sure, sometimes it is an inconvenience, I'm not going to lie to you and tell you it's, you know, it's perfect. It's not perfect, but it is beautiful. I like it the way it is, and I do not like restrictive laws like this, because then what happens? People, then they can't park on Mini Circle, they park on the next street over, which is Ahmed. Then Ahmed comes up here, they ask for permitted parking. Where do you stop it? You know, do you just keep kicking the can down the street until it's so far down that, you know, the kids aren't going to park there and walk? I don't know. I just don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I know that there are other folks who are here or in support or against it. Can I see a show of hands, how many is in support of it? Okay, all right. Okay, oppose? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, members, thoughts? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm just going off the staff report. I mean, I see 75, over 75% of the people on that street have signed the petition. To your point earlier about asking who was for and against, so I mean, I'm just, I'm going off of that. I appreciate Mr. Martinez's comments, I mean, because it does give us a different perspective. However, and you probably may or may not have seen these, Mr. Martinez, but I'm looking at photos of cars that are blocking driveways, that are blocking fire hydrants that are not parked correctly. And so personally, I mean, I think, I'm listening to the majority. I know we can't make everybody happy, but I'm listening to the majority of residents. And if maybe there's a way, we can, I don't know if, Ryan, maybe you can articulate if there's another consideration that if it's harder to enforce, if you have the permit during the school years and don't, you know, then it's not required when school is out. I don't know if that's worth it. In general, I'm in favor, but I would ask if there's, you could articulate whether that's even a possibility.
Councilmember Wayne and Councilmember Detrick.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm just one of, yeah, Mr. Chapman could answer.
Yes, so the way it's currently written, it's Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 p.m. I considered trying to make it, write it in such a way that it was only in effect when the school was in session, but determined that it would be very difficult to actually enforce and determine those hours.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Wayne.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, thank you for speaking and for bringing those up. I will say that I do know some high school students that attend there, and I've asked him about parking there, and they said it's so much easier to get to and from. You park, you know, you park there, you can get into the school, and then when you're done, you can leave, and there's not the traffic like what Councilmember Hume was saying, as well as you've got parents picking up high school students. But in regards to Mr. Martinez's comments about a pool person that comes by, the gardener, I have both, and they take less than an hour to do what they need to do. I'm wondering if we can have a sign that says one hour parking, but anything more than that must have a permit, because I would assume that your pool person and your gardener would not need more than one hour. However, if a student was parking their car there, I can't imagine that they would be moving their car every hour, running out there to move their car an hour. So that might fix that. Just a thought.
I think that'd be, that'd be a pretty hard one to monitor, though, for, I mean, if you drive by after 8 o'clock and they have a permit, they're covered. If they don't, they're breaking. But if they're, if they're there for an hour, then you got to come back a second time to see if that same car is still there.
School starts at 8 o'clock? I would assume if they, you know, I mean, I, you'd have to drive by anyway, right, to see?
You'd have to have a meter made at that point. You'd have to drive by a second time.
So there is a provision in the ordinance that exempts vehicles for anyone that's working on your property or your home, and that would include a pool cleaner or a gardener.
Without a permit?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? We can't hear you. Come on up to the podium, please.
So the guy that services my pool just uses a regular work truck, it's not labeled in any way. Same for my gardener. I mean, you could probably see the gardener and infer that he's there, but the pool guy, not necessarily so. So what happens if he gets a ticket? Or how does, how do they know that it's the pool guy? If the vehicle's not marked?
Is there anyone here from Elk Grove High School? Are any of the kids back there from Elk Grove High School? Okay, Mr. Martinez, I'm going to let you in on a little secret. We don't really have parking enforcement in the city of Elk Grove, so your pool guy's going to be able to come service your house, and I don't think he's going to have any kind of a problem.
You know what? You know what? Again, again, you know what? I know. But I'm a rules-a-rules type of person.
I get it. You're preaching to the choir, brother. I hear what you're saying, and I like what you're laying down.
Yeah. So I appreciate the fact that, yeah, you can give me a wink and tell me it's not going to be enforced, but as soon as the high school kids figure that out... it's not gonna be enforced, but as soon as the high school kids figure that out, then we're back to square one, only we've got those signs all over the neighborhood. Anyway.
Well, thank you very much, you can, you can sit back down, but I'm not saying it won't be enforced, we don't have proactive enforcement where we're gonna be driving around, and it's like, oh, that truck doesn't have a permit, give it a ticket. But what this would do is would allow for the neighbors that, that are having a problem with that parking going on, that they can call the city, and the city will be responsive. We wouldn't, we couldn't be responsive, except for a situation where they're blocking a fire hydrant, or blocking a driveway, or doing something illegal. You know, and I think that this has been an ongoing problem, as was mentioned, since prior to incorporation. I mean, I live across the street from the high school on, off, on the east side of Elk Grove Florin, and so I have to deal with Markoff Elementary, Elk Grove High School, and Kerr Junior High, and 15 minutes one way or another in the morning can make a difference between whether I'm pulling my hair out, or whether I'm starting off on a good foot and gonna have a good day. And unfortunately, it's not just the students. The parents drive like idiots, too. And they make turns across double yellow lines, and pull, and park in right in front of the sign that says, "No stopping anytime," and they're sitting right there, or they'll double park and block the lane of traffic. So it's an issue over there, I get it. And I, and I appreciate your point as being a rules guy, and what I sort of distilled from your comments is you're also a small government and personal liberty kind of individual. And I appreciate those sentiments immensely, but the flip side of your coin is, by paying your property taxes, you essentially are buying the rights to be able to enjoy your property and to have parking in front of your house. If that's being taken by a kid that doesn't want to park where parking is provided for them, then that's, that's really there infringing upon your individual liberty. So, I think, as the mayor suggested, to take this item to the two-by-two and see if there isn't a better traffic flow issue with the, with the parking at the high school, but see, you know, put up the barricade as the first measure. Obviously, that didn't work, 'cause now people just park on the other side of the barricade, and they don't have to worry about the barricade, and they can hop in their car and go. But I do have concern with the idea of creep of this, and that now that we've put it on mini, now they're just gonna park over on Ahmed, or maybe they'll park over on Kadura Circle, or maybe they'll park down a little bit on Emerald Vista. So that's gonna have to be monitored and managed, and I don't want to see a situation where, as was mentioned, we end up with just nothing but sign blight. But I know that when you go downtown, there are plenty of neighborhoods where you cannot park there without a resident permit, and while I find it frustrating at times, I appreciate the fact that for the folks that live there, they like to be able to enjoy that. So, I'm gonna be in favor of this tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, that being the case, on to train a motion.
Move to support staff.
Move to support staff's recommendation.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, all right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with Item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of Elk Grove City Council, Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager and Project Planner for the Item 9.1, which is the Second Amendment to the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement. The project brought to you forth this evening consists of a request to extend the terms of the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement for a minimum of three years to October 9, 2021. This agreement would also extend out the date for the developer to construct the first park site within Sterling Meadows from earlier this year out to December of this year. It also addresses improvement security, community facilities district proceeds, modified roadway improvement requirements, and also the phasing of those improvements. And finally, it would transfer a portion of the Sterling Meadows property south of Bilby Road to the city. That piece of property is approximately 22.69 acres. As far as the project location, as you're all, you should be familiar with, this is the Sterling Meadows property, approximately 200 acres at the south end of the city, approximately half mile west of Highway 99, north of Camera Road. As far as the current status of the Sterling Meadows project, they are in their last phases of their existing development agreement. As far as the site improvements are going, they do have site improvements and residential construction ongoing at the northern half of the property, which is Phase 1, that's roughly north of Bilby Road, which bisects the property in the location I'm pointing to. However, south of Bilby Road, which is Phase 2, there are portions of the development that are under review, but there's no maps recorded or improvements underway for that portion of the development. Going back to the history of this project, this was approved as a largely residential project, approximately 1,100 residential units, spread between low-density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential. And looking at the extensions to this project that we've been working on with the developer going on, probably a year now, been looking at it from a land use perspective, specifically economic development perspective, and looking at some of our goals relating to the improvement of our jobs-housing balance, and also our strategic goal to foster a vibrant and diverse economy in Elk Grove oriented towards growing jobs and targeted industry, while also offering an array of residential choice within the city. Furthermore, into the context of the discussions that have been going on with the Sterling Meadows Development, the Sterling Meadows project is outlined in red on the map before you. As you could see, those shades of tan represent residential development, whereas to the east and west are the Lent Ranch properties and the SEPA Plan area, where you could see some of those shades of purple and higher intensity shades of tan, represent higher intensity uses and employment generating uses, which is kind of the city's focus in the south area, especially given the future extension of the Camera Road and the joint power southeast area connector. We think that's going to be a major corridor and appropriate location for higher intensity uses such as commercial and office. Based on some of the previous discussions, the city did request in lieu, or in, in exchange for an extension of the development agreement, a request to provide 30 acres of office-owned land adjacent to Camera Road. However, those negotiations were never finalized. And brought before the council on May 19th, early this year, the city council approved the First Amendment to the Sterling Meadows DA, which provided a 90-day extension out to October to extend the terms of the development agreement so that staff and the applicant may continue to work on terms that were mutually agreeable between the developer and city staff. As far as the Second Development Agreement Amendment, we have come to terms that offer substantive changes to the development agreement. Could outline some of those before you. As I mentioned before, it would dedicate to the city approximately 22.69 acres at the southern end of Sterling Meadows subdivision. The delivery of that would be by April 1st, 2019. They would also require to construct a full with improvements of Lots Parkway over the said shed C channel, whereas the remainder of Lots Parkway, they would have to provide the full with improvements. They'd also have to construct a right turn pocket from Camera Road onto Lots Parkway, and construct a temporary asphalt path along the 22.69 acres to be dedicated to the city. Finally, they'd also have to annex into the Casunas Community Service District's CFD, Community Facilities District, for fire service. Before you, you can see a map of the change to the land use plan, lotting pattern of the Sterling Meadows map that would change based on this development agreement. On the left is the current lotting pattern, on the right, the hatched area at the bottom area of the map represents the 22.69 acres that's proposed to be conveyed to the city. In return for some of those deal points I mentioned, the applicant would receive a development agreement extension to October 9, 2021. It would allow the applicant to obtain bonds as, and as an acceptable form of security for final maps. It would extend the delivery of the first park site from August 31st out to December 31st of this year, and it would also relieve them of some of the improvement obligations, including landscape corridors and sound walls along Camera Road and Lots Parkway, and the south side of Classical Drive, which is the street that would run on the north side of the property to be conveyed to the city. As far as recent actions on the Second DA Amendment, on July 10th, the Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend the city council approve the terms of the Second Amendment, and then subsequently on July 18th, the Casunas Community Service District Board of Directors also approved this, the Second Amendment to the development agreement. Tonight, staff does recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance, finding that no further environmental review is required for this project, as there's a prior negative, prior EIR on the project that still remains valid, and also approving the Second Amendment to the Sterling Meadows Development Agreement. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions, should you have any.
Any questions? There are no questions, thank you. Okay, at this point, I wanted to declare our public hearing open, and I would like to invite the applicant, Mr. Aiden Barry, to come on up. Here we are, we have an open mind, sir, plead your case.
Thank you. My name is Aiden Barry, I'm with the True Life Companies. The True Life Company is the manager for VTL Sterling Meadows, the ownership of this project. I've had the proud opportunity to be in front of you before, and we're making some tremendous process, progress between what we've done under the First Amendment, and now discussing tonight in detail the Second Amendment. But with your indulgence, I'd like to, kind of, you've just seen me, so what I'd like to do is introduce a little bit of the team of the Sterling Meadows. Behind me tonight is Kevin Kemper with George Phillips Landlaw, he's our land use and transactional attorney. Next to him is Derek Spalding, he's our managing director for this region, the Sacramento region was instrumental in the acquisition of this property in 2014 for the True Life Companies. Next to him is Jim McDonough, he's our licensed general contractor and construction manager for the development of Sterling Meadows. Last year, he pulled off within one construction season the construction of 380 lots, on time and within budget. Next to him is Josh Marston from McKay &amp; Somp, our engineer of record. This is a talented group of individuals, and by adding those four to me, if I could have smoke and music come down, it would be our starting five for your Sterling Meadows team. But I wanted to just take a minute and introduce to you that there is depth behind the company that we're involved with, and I consider our relationship with this town that of a public-private partnership, and I consider that on a move-forward basis. And we've demonstrated in that, in how we've worked with the policymakers that are in front of me, as well as your staff, and I'm proud to be here tonight. Why am I here tonight? We're here to request your approval of the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment to our development agreement, very simply as staff has articulated, allows for a three-year extension for us to build out the remainder of our property from a northerly direction of Bilby Road, south to Camera, which includes then at the southerly portion, your property. We have worked with staff in developing the term sheet dated May 31st. That term sheet has been captured within the Second Amendment, with the exception of one provision, 6.11, which we'll talk about in a minute. As I mentioned, we acquired the property in 2014, it was an entitlement put in place in 2008. We did our due diligence, we knew what we were up against from the standpoint of the history of the entitlement and the expiration of, the expiration of the DA in 2018. That's why a year ago, literally a year ago, we initiated a letter, initiated a letter to the city manager's office requesting an extension for the development agreement, and I'm honored to be here tonight, actually very close to the finish line. The term sheet nailed down the provisions, and basically, in its simplest form, we're getting an additional three years, and in exchange, we're conveying title to the city of Elk Grove, 22.69 acres along the frontage along Camera Road. You have adopted policies recently, as it relates to your general plan, and it was discussed by staff, that talks about your intent of what you would like to accomplish along Camera Road. And not to be too cute about some of the feedback that I got, but those policies that the city has adopted relative to the importance of that corridor along Camera, you didn't want to see two-story stucco boxes along that edge, not to oversimplify the issue, but we get it. We're pleased to be able to convey that property to the city by April 1st of 2019. But what we can't do, and what was not in the term sheet, was change the phasing of how we're constructing the southern portion of our property in a normal sequence of events. So, starting at Bilby Road, Phase 2A is our first release, is 75 lots, then coming down, including Lots Parkway, 2A, 2C, 2B, and 2C. 2B and 2C are the phases that are contiguous with the northern boundary of the property we'll be conveying to the city. We will be, as a normal course of business over the next three years, completing the improvements on the southern portion of our property. As a part of completing those improvements, we have to enter into subdivision improvement agreements and bonds associated with the individual phases. Those individual phases will have the guarantees and sureties that we have established in our track record in building to the north. The provision that staff proposed within 6.11, would I, which would require us to grade the site prior, prior to conveyance in April 1, and it would also, actually also require the utility stubs be brought to the property prior to. That basically takes our phasing plan and turns it upside down. Those conditions we cannot live with. So I'm here tonight with a development agreement that's this thick, and I'm only asking for consideration of this council, two points having to do with the timing of the improvements to service the city's parcel, and the grading of the parcel itself. So we proposed to staff this morning, language that would satisfy our needs. And basically, they're very simple, and I'll read them. The changes to 6.11 that we're suggesting is, A, water sewer, storm drain, and dry utilities with Phase 2B. Developers shall construct water sewer, storm drain, and dry utility stubs at Classical Drive and Encore Way to serve the southern property, consistent with the existing prepared plans, concurrently with the improvements constructed for Phase 2B. The utility stubs are included in the existing improvement plans for Phase 2B, and just as a footnote, all our plans have been through three, four, or five plan checks, we're ready to go from the standpoint of final map and improvement plans. So all of this has been vetted currently within a set of improvement plans. The utility stubs are included in the existing improvement plans for Phase 2B, and security for the utility stubs shall be provided by security bonds for Phase 2B, as set forth in the applicable subdivision improvement agreement. The city may withhold issuance of building permits for Phases 2B, 2C, and 2E until security is provided in a manner specified herein. The same language I'm applying then for the 2C, that's why I don't have to read that to you, but we've provided this information to staff. So basically, in a nutshell, I'm asking for the council's direction to amend 6.11 in our development agreement language that allows for the subdivision improvement agreements and the bonding, and the timing of the utilities to be installed in conjunction with 2B and 2C. That is a reasonable request, it's consistent with our term sheet that we've negotiated, and quite frankly, it's imperative in order for us to be able to move forward. Now, taking a step back from the specific language, I do want to report out some tremendous news. As I, as I mentioned, Jim McDonough was able to deliver 380 lots last year. We subsequently sold to three home builders, all of which you know, that are currently marketing for sale, four different residential products, Richmond American, Lennar, and Kayhoff. They have all been extremely successful on their initial sales, the volumes are going extremely well, their sales rate and their numbers look really good. So in a normal course of doing business, we will be starting this year with 2A, subject to finalizing of this document, and moving directly into Phases 2B, 2C, and ultimately 2E, 2D now being the city's parcel. So in a normal course of business, by the end of next year, we would be posting the bonds and doing the subdivision improvement agreements for the two phases that would impact your property, Phases 2B and 2C. That's my request tonight, I know it's a detailed item, but I do need your involvement in getting this one kind of nailed tonight, and to a certain extent, that's why I've brought my team here, to, if there's any questions that you have for me on why we need this and what we're asking for. But I appreciate the work that staff has done in getting us to this point, and it's normally my job to make sure that I'm in complete alignment. normally my job to make sure that I'm in complete alignment with staff. And my apologies to you all, I have not been able to get there on this one issue, but I do need your support on these, on this request in order to be able to move forward this evening. I'm available to answer any questions, and so is my entire team.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question. Hi, Aiden, thanks for coming down here with your team. I just have a question as to, the staff report earlier showed it went through CSD and Planning Commission approval, and did you voice your concern at these previous meetings, and why not? If so, why not?
Thank you. There definitely has been a process, we've gone to the Planning Commission and to CCSD. If I may, I'm going to, and I don't like to do this, but every once in a while, you can identify that you've made a mistake. When the staff report came out for the Planning Commission, I was, there were a few open issues that I was continuing to work on with staff, and it was acknowledged that we were going to have some continuing discussions at the Planning Commission level and with the CCSD. And let me be real clear where my focus was. Staff identified in their report today that we've been asked to be annexed into CFD number one. The, the Sterling Meadows project was exempt from that. Their rate and method that they put in place did not include our 1,000 lots. Therefore, we felt, since we were just asking for an extension of time, we shouldn't be annexed into CFD number one. And we went through, and just a great back and forth between myself and the chief, their staff, and ultimately their board decided that because there was a DA amendment, they wanted us to annex. We've now, based on that discussion, have had very good open dialogue, and we've agreed, obviously, consistent with the condition that's in front of us tonight, that we, we will be annexing it into CFD number one. So, Vice Mayor, my focus at the Planning Commission was giving the Planning Commission an update on where I was with that issue. I did not address this issue, but quite frankly, I thought we were closer with staff on kind of the timing for the grading in the utilities than actually 6.11 identified, and I was planning on continuing to kind of work through that process. So, shame on me for not pounding my fist on the table, but I felt that I had the opportunity to continue working on that, and I'm ultimately bringing it to you for a decision. Thank you.
No additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm available for questions.
All right. At this point, I want to open for public comment, I have a couple of individuals sign up to speak. First is Lynn Wheat, following Lynn is Ed Owen.
Remember our city history when the mayor and city council rezoned this land, removing the commercial for the benefit of the original owner, developer of the property? This is a response to what would sell. Ten years later, and another market study continues to support the 2008 decision. I agree with the staff's recommendations, and hope you will support the recommendations. With that said, I want to state my position on this entire process. But here we are, and the knots and bolts of this agreement leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and should yours as well. First, this out-of-town developer bought the land and invested in good faith in accordance with the DA, a bet with a limited time until expiration. While legally permissible, of course, the city changed the rules and essentially wanted to extort 30 acres of office land as a condition of DA extension. Legally permissible, but this, but is this acting in pro-business, good faith? Second, the city strong-armed 22.69 acres of land as a compromise, but now we have the city acting as a landowner and admitting it intends to use this site for economic development. Will this be used for an economic incentive for a local developer? Anytime the city intervenes in the market by holding land, it has an unfair competitive advantage and upsets the economic forces the private sector must operate within. So while legally permissible, is this acting in pro-business, good faith? Finally, who has historically been the beneficiary in most of our past current economic development deals? I've started calling Mr. Pappas, the father of our city. I feel for this out-of-town developer, and wonder how the deal would have went down if the property was still under the ownership of a longtime Elk Grove landowner. I also wonder what these type of extortion deals will do to our regional reputation and credibility. Too bad the developer was told to designate 30 acres for office, or give 22.6 acres to the city and you get a DA extension. Sounds like blackmail to me.
Next speaker is Ed Owen.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I am kind of tired of, every time a developer comes in to Elk Grove, there's all the changes, there's all of these, well, we can't afford a sound wall, we'll do, we want to, we don't want to put up a sound wall, or we don't want to finish the sidewalks, we'll put a temporary asphalt sidewalk, which never, ever gets paved, because there's one right up on, down by Trader Joe's on, on that Brucefield, that's just asphalt, it's been there forever. I think a developer, when they come here, they gotta expect to spend the money. This gentleman here said they, they sold six, 380 homes, so it's not like they don't have the money. I think they need to spend it, and I think they need to really, when they present something to the Planning Commission, and then they come up here and say, oh gee, I'm sorry, I forgot that, or, you know, it's my fault. This is not really a full application, as far as I can tell. It hasn't been given enough time to be reviewed by citizens. Just wanted to point that out. And that's all I got to say. Just keep giving our money away.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there are no additional members of the public signing to speak, I want to close the public comment, and would like to invite Mr. Aiden Barry to come on up for our closing or rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are extremely confident of what we've been able to accomplish in Elk Grove with the Sterling Meadows project. We look forward to a successful completion of that. I think I've laid out very succinctly the specific request that we have tonight. I think it's manageable to get accomplished tonight. You have my commitment to stay with it in detailed discussion until we can get it resolved and move forward. And we really appreciate the work that staff has done in kind of scrubbing through all of the details. And again, I do need it, because if this is not an issue that affects the Planning Commission relative to land use and/or any other function associated with that, nor in my opinion, and I still need some work to do it, we'll need to make sure that the CCSD is comfortable with any language change that we discuss tonight, and I'm committed to going through that process. But I believe we've done what we need to do from the standpoint of staff work and discussions with you all to be able to get this thing across the finish line tonight, and I need your indulgence to get that done. And I'm here to get it done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to declare public hearing closed, and council deliberation in direction. Good? Councilman Hume?
Yeah, I want to start, even though we've discussed this before, with a little background information, just so people understand what we are and aren't discussing, and what we are and aren't doing. When this project was originally approved, which I had not vote for, and I was the only council member on this dice right now that was there at the time, it entered into a development agreement, which vested certain rights with that project that would carry forward, and exchange, the city would receive a project as, as promised, that had a timeframe. That project was not delivered within that timeframe. Mr. Aiden's company was not the original developer to enter into that development agreement. And so when he, when they purchased this project, they, they'd done some due diligence, knew, probably knew they were grabbing a little bit of a tiger by the tail with respect to its history. However, they did so in good faith, and expecting that they would be able to, to perform within the timeframe that they'd been allotted. That didn't happen. Market forces are the things, who knows? So as we're approaching the expiration of that development agreement, which would then, those vested rights would expire, and it would be fair game again for, for new approvals, the city was very clear with Mr. Barry, that, you know, this has been the sort of bugaboo of this project, the southern portion for this whole time. And initially, Mr. Barry's response was, well then, we need to hurry up and get our maps processed so that we can preserve those rights and, and what's referred to in the business as called perfecting, we can perfect those maps. That, he wasn't, was not able to get that done. I don't know why, I don't want to cast any dispersion on he or his team, but then that sort of put pressure on the issue of that we still have this southern portion that we don't want to see, as he said, two-story boxes up front in Camera Road, or as I've said, rooftops behind a sound wall on our major economic development corridor. So, then, they came back and said, well, in exchange for preserving our rights on three-quarters of our project, we will gift the city this 22-acre parcel that will then, you will agree to alleviate some of the improvements that would have been only required by the development of that parcel. So it's not giving them away something that they would have to do otherwise, the development that would have required those improvements has now been scrubbed. To me, that's above and beyond even what we were looking to do. We just wanted a different land use, and had they retained control of the land, that would have been acceptable, whatever. But instead, they said, here, listen, we're just gonna, we'll, we'll give it to you to do your changes with. The great thing about that is that now the city would have 22.69 acres, the, not unfortunate thing, but the, the variable in all of that is, is I don't think any of us up here in the room have a perfectly clear idea of exactly what we want to do with that acreage, or what's even possible, or who would come to the table potentially in a, you know, public-private partnership scenario. As Wheat talked about, you know, being a competitor of development, well, the traditional development is constrained by the financiers and what they are willing to, to put money behind, and so by the city having land in their back pocket, they can put that into the deal that maybe would, would be a driver towards getting a project that wouldn't otherwise be delivered. So to me, these are all good things for the city. However, now let's talk about kind of the elephant in the room. To Mr. Barry's sort of mea culpa, he did not do some things along the way they should have done and didn't do them in the timely manner he should have done them. However, here we are at what's right and what's best, and versus what's maybe pushing the envelope just a little bit too far. I feel if we were to require not only them to give up the land at zero basis, not only to not put in the infrastructure improvements that we did not want to see, we didn't want that sound wall on Camera Road, so they're not doing something that we didn't want them to do, to use a double negative. And they are missing out on, on whatever projected income that, that property would have delivered them had they developed it as the original plan. So, to me, there's, they've put a lot on the table, we're getting some benefit out of it, and we are in a good catbird seat going forward with respect to being able to do something, maybe out of the box, or, you know, the Vice Mayor and I went on a SAOCOG tour, where they are actually taking single-story commercial corridors built back decades ago, and are, are raising them in order to put something more intensive use and to really vitalize the, revitalize those corridors. And we have an opportunity to do that at the front end. So, it's unfortunate that we're, you know, at the 11th hour, I don't know that we want to try and make sausage from the dais, but I think that we can direct Mr. Barry's representatives and city staff to, to take one more crack at getting this thing put to bed the right way.
Vice Mayor?
I appreciate Councilman Hume, all your comments, starting with the history and, and how he got here. And I would, I would concur with a lot of what you said, the only, you know, what I, in fact, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put an emphasis on the point of making policy at the dais. And so, what was very disappointing, I have to say, Mr. Barry, is that with, with the Planning Commission and CSD, that this couldn't have been brought up earlier. And, and I, and I also appreciate your, your acknowledgement, and we're all human, so I, I get that. But I had to ask, because this is, it's a complex agreement, it's, a lot of people, a lot of staff, including yourself, put a lot of time into this. And I do recognize, having talked to staff, I know there's, there's a bit of confusion, I think, on what happened. And so, you know, not getting into, you know, who's right or who's wrong, I'd be willing to maybe ask for an extension, or look at maybe a special meeting, and I'm gonna look to the city attorney and staff to see if that's even possible, given, I know we've got a time constraint on this with the development agreement, is that even possible?
It is possible, councilmember, soon, and we do have a very, very tight time constraint. In order to make the development agreement extension, this council has to approve a second read of the ordinance for the development agreement, no later than August 22nd. That was the reason it was brought to you tonight, this was going to be the first read. We thought we had a deal here tonight, that we don't quite have a deal yet. If there's anything I've learned, it's a bad idea to try to craft language like this from the dais. When we do that, both parties are usually dissatisfied with what we do. So if you're considering doing something different than what is on the agenda for tonight, my recommendation is that we pick a date for a special meeting, continue this to a date certain, reopen the public hearing, because there will be some changes, there may be opportunities for the public to weigh in on that, you want to receive that if there is any, and move that forward to that special date. So we can decide that in a moment, what date you might want to do that, if you want to do that. One of the things that I would ask the council to provide some direction to staff on, is what would you like those changes to be? We're gonna run out of time very quickly if we don't take a first read in the next couple of weeks.
Here's, yeah, so I, thank you, and, and for that prompt, and I, so what I have in mind is, you know, we're, we're talking about the extension of utilities, we're talking about grading of the site. Councilman Hume, you know, articulated, touched on it a little bit, and that is, you know, we, we don't know what will happen there in, in the future, today. So, you know, yes, we want those utilities stubbed down there, but what size are those utilities, where, you know, where would be the best location? So those are considerations, I think, that we could, we need to talk about. But I, I do know that I would like to, if we're gonna extend it, I would, I would, and this is a, this is a question to the, the applicant, if the, the framing around that discussion, and, because we don't have a lot of time, I want to make it very specific, and I think is, or what I would like to see is grading of the site, as was originally talked about, and then talking about maybe the, the utilities being, having appropriate security for those utilities in the normal process of the final map recordation. However, city is able to access that site if it needed to, if it found a user at that point. The city's access, has ability to access that site, put in those improvements themselves if need be, or if that, for that user to put in those improvements. If the city had put in improvements, then there'd be reimbursement from the applicant for, for doing that. And those, to me, that is the discussion, you, the articulation of the request was minimal, so I'm making the conversation also minimal. And to me, that would be my only willingness to extend this, this, this discussion to a future date.
Councilman Ed Ericrick?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said already. One of the things I want to make sure that we, if there's any easements and all easements that would be needed, to make sure that that's included in this development agreement, if by some chance, we have to go back in and put those improvements in before you have an opportunity to. You know, I looked at, I've had a lot of conversations with Aiden over the last few months, several today as a matter of fact, and, you know, one of the things we talk about is, when, when you negotiate, if you, if you walk away and you feel you both got pinched a little bit, it was probably a fair deal. This one here's a tough one, because, you know, there's 20, plus or minus 22 acres taken off the table from your project and donated to the city, but then we in turn took, took a hit on some responsibilities that you would have been obligated to do, as well as, in essence, you're, you're, you're also buying the three-year extension on that development agreement. So I mean, I, I think everybody's on the same page with that, probably maybe leaves a little bad taste in everybody's mouth on this project from different perspectives, going back to 2008, when this got flipped, and then every time it was sold in, during that time, we've tried to get it turned back, and nobody wanted to do it. So, I applaud you for being the So I applaud you for being the first one to, with a little bit of assistance from our part and request that, on the negotiation for this, that you did come around to something we think will really benefit the city long-term, helps you get your project done, and the timeframes that you're gonna need, and then also relieves you some, some obligations. I got a question for, for John. If, worst case is, let's say they do not perform on their, their phases that would require to put the stubbing in by the time the end of the development agreement ends in, potentially in, what is it, December of 2019, or excuse me, 2021?
Be October 2021.
October 21.
Is a proposal on the table. So it's gonna depend on how we craft the development agreement. Of course, there's no deal until there's a deal signed by everyone. But what's contemplated now, if you're going to delay the utilities, I think this is your, your question, Councilmember Detrick, if you're gonna delay the installation of the utilities until later and they don't perform, or let's say for whatever reason, market forces or whatever cause them to be unable to build the homes, then those improvements would not be constructed.
So is there a way that we could have it crafted in? It has to be put in no later than the end of the date of the development agreement?
We can. We, we, we could put that a term as a development agreement. Of course, the developer would have to agree to that. It is an agreement, can't force that through this process. But we could insert a term that says, all those utilities must be in by the end of the development agreement regardless. And I think where you may be going with this, that was one of the proposals early on, which was not finalized into the agreement, but that was a suggestion from the developer.
Aiden, could you come up here and speak on that? Because that, that's an important point for me, that you guys are willing to make sure, because you said you're, if things go well, you'll do it by, potentially by the December of 2019. But would you be willing to have it written into the agreement? Worst case, you would do it no later than the end of the, October of 2021.
Mayor and council, we are completely open to the concept of a, putting this back to being a work session between myself and staff on a date certain special hearing, so I greatly appreciate that. I fully greatly appreciate the direction that you're providing. I do want to clarify real quickly that we're not delaying the installation of utilities. Our whole claim from day one is a normal course of construction. We're not delaying anything. So what we're trying to make sure that we're doing is not we're being asked to put in utilities ahead of schedule. That's the clarification. But Vice Mayor Sun provided clear direction to staff on the framework of the negotiations, and I think we can work with staff on additional language associated with specific performance. I don't know the details, I can't commit to that sitting here right now, but I can continue, I can commit that we will work with staff immediately in trying to craft language that will satisfy the concerns of the council this evening.
You didn't answer my question.
I can't, without seeing the specifics, I can't commit to just a kind of a blanket statement without understanding what the specifics are. Councilman Detrick, that, I don't know yet. I can't stand here right now and say that, taking all market forces aside, I'll spend $5 million putting in utilities for a parcel that I just gave away. That wasn't a part of the term sheet.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that this discussion has happened before, so I would have assumed you would have had, had a little more information to be able to work from to make a decision this late in the game. We're trying to help you, and I'm trying to find-
I'm, I'm right there with you, and I, and all I'm, just keep going on providing direction, and if that's something that you would like us to achieve, let me just make sure that I'm not missing something specific. Let me bring up Kevin Kemper from my, our law firm.
Councilmember Detrick, council, if you'll indulge me, I think the question you're asking is a, is a yes or no question. Would you be able to put in the utilities by the end of the term of the DA, which is October 9, 2021, regardless of anything else? Your question, Councilmember Detrick, is will they commit to that, regardless of anything else?
So, sitting here today, I can't make that decision, that I can convey, I cannot make that decision sitting here today. And that's not a commitment that has been made in the past. And quite frankly, the way that legal counsel has just phrased that is trying to put me in a box. That's not a fair question that has been posed to us yet.
Councilman Detrick, so my understanding is, earlier in the conversation, and this is where kind of the mix-up I was referring to, earlier in the conversation, before it was decided that the city would assume ownership of the property, there is gonna be, True Life was looking to sell the property to the city. Under that scenario, there was utility stub to, and the city would purchase then a fully graded, finished site with utility stub. Things changed, it became such that the True Life properties would dedicate that site to the city. But where the, where things fell short, there's devils always in the details, is, my understanding is True Life assumed that the utilities would no longer have to be provided, but staff assumed that utilities would still be provided.
No, I, I understand all that.
Okay, so then-
But that's, that's also the way it's been written the whole time.
Yes, and, and that, yes. And then there's no, there was no objection at the Planning Commission or CSD.
No, I know.
And so that, so my, well, I-
So me.
Yeah, and I, I, I know, I know. I, I'm just recapping, so my, my, my proposal is, instead of trying to negotiate all up here, let's, let's, let staff give it a couple more weeks, which is the absolute drop-dead date, under the conditions that we will receive a, a graded site, and that we'll figure out whether or not utilities will be provided. If they're not provided, there's, there's a mechanism in place such, such that either the city or the end user that comes in can provide that. If the city provides it, they would have to pay or reimburse. Obviously, if the end user did it, then their cost is on them, but some, something like that is just the conversation.
Let the conversations continue, and hopefully I'll, I'll agree to continue this till the August 8th meeting at 6:00 PM, if that works.
August 8th at 6:00 PM.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Councilmember? I'll second that, and then I'll, I'll put a point on some of the issues.
Yeah, I would like to, thank you for that. I'd like to get a little clarity on the direction. The, the date and time works great, that would be the date of a regular council meeting. We have our summer recess, but we can fill in the council meeting on that as a special council meeting. I would note that that continued council meeting will be a continued public hearing with the public hearing reopened. We won't renotice a public hearing because we're agendizing it to a date certain, but there will be an opportunity for members of the public and others to weigh in on the, on the changes.
Okay, so with the permission of the maker of the motion, the points that I heard being asked to be flushed out between now and the, the meeting on the 8th. Grade the site prior to April 1st of 19, as already exists in there. The delivery security slash bonding would be due at map recordation. No building permits would be issued until acceptance of said improvements. Access permission or some ability to front-load the improvements with some sort of reimbursement by the developer.
And easements for them.
And, and-
Or irrevocable offers of dedication, some sort of right-of-entry that would allow the city to front-load those improvements and get on the site to do that if we chose to do that.
Right. Exploring some sort of guarantee that the improvements would be delivered by the expiration of the DA.
That's correct. That's perfect.
Did that hit everything?
Yeah, that's fine.
We can work within that outline. Obviously, there's some work to be done, but we can work within that outline.
Friendly advice?
Yes, sir.
Start tomorrow.
Tonight.
That invitation is available to start immediately. Thank you.
All right. See you on the 8th at 6:00. All right. I didn't hear about yet.
Do a vote on this.
Oh, that's right. Let's, let's do that. Okay, I'll change a motion to continue this till the 8th at 6:00 PM.
We already have a motion.
Got a second?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, extension. All right, next item.
Biggest item, 9.2, a public hearing to consider resolution approving the Republic Services reported delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on the Sacramento County tax roll.
Jamie Bandy, revenue manager. I'm here this evening to present the report of delinquent utility charges for Republic Services, and I've just prepared a brief summary. So effective July 1, 2017, the utility billing responsibility was transitioned from the city to Republic Services. At that time, Republic Services began billing July 1st moving forward. Tonight's accounts, anybody that is on the proposed tax levy list, are those accounts that are delinquent with Republic Services for charges that incurred after the July 1, 2017 transition to Republic. Each year, the city utilizes, utilizes the county tax roll process to recover the costs that have already been incurred. Republic Services will continue to utilize that process to collect their delinquent charges, while city staff will help facilitate that process. On July 11, 2018, Republic Services notified about 4,000 account holders of tonight's public hearing. Those customers do have until July 31, 2018, to bring their accounts current, and anybody who does so will be removed from that delinquent list and will not be submitted to the county. Representatives from Republic Services are here this evening to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Oh, Councilman Humor?
Thank you, Mayor. Jamie, I don't know if, if you were with whom this person spoke, but I, I talked to a former constituent who now lives down in Visalia but still owns property up off of Sheldon Road, Dave Armanderas, and he had a delinquent amount due that he paid in full the next day.
Okay.
And he says then, subsequent to that, received a notice from Sacramento County Collector owing the amount with a, a service charge, I believe. And I think he has since had the issue, after a little bit of runaround with Republic Services, has had the issue cleared up, everything except for the service charge that was charged to him. But if you wouldn't mind, I don't, he couldn't figure out, and I couldn't understand how supposedly the action that we're taking tonight had been implemented prior to that.
I do know that we've had a couple of customers who also received delinquent notices from Sacramento County for separate accounts, not anything having to do with Republic Services or with the city. So I'm not sure if that was the, the case.
So it could just be coincidence that it was a different utility account?
Possibly, yes. Because there, there should not have been anything that's been submitted to the county yet at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, one other thing. I've had, I've tried calling Republic myself the other day at 7 o'clock, about 7:30 in the morning, and all the lines were busy. And said the high call volumes, and so I don't know if that's something we can look into on their, what the, what the response time is on those calls. Because I, I was, well, you know, pretty surprised to have it on a Tuesday morning at, you know, 7 o'clock, that they'd have all their lines busy.
I do know that there is staff here from Republic, if you'd also like to have them maybe address that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. So we do have some other representatives that would be able to answer your question, Steve. So we've got Lisa Chesnick, office manager, who's working closely with our call center, and will be able to provide the statistics that you asked.
Okay. So Lisa, if you don't mind coming up.
Tony, while she's coming up, I was just wondering, is there, or maybe there is, and you can articulate, is there a plan in place to improve the, the response to, to the, you know, the, the wait times, the response to, to people calling?
Yeah, so aside from the weekly and monthly conversations that we're having, we're providing data back to the call center in terms of information that we hear from you, as well as from third-party vendors that are doing net promoter scores and feedback that we're receiving from residents. And so just maintaining a constant communication and making sure that we're constantly moving the needle on the improvement to get the residents taken care of in a faster prompt time.
Okay, good, thank you. I think folks would like to hear that. Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, we're working, like he was kind of talking with the, our customer service, trying to kind of resolve this issue, hiring more people there, training. I personally am back and forth helping resolve issue, and in terms of sending any kind of issues back to them so they can talk to those reps that had the issues, they won't happen in the future. We, I have, you know, conference calls with them weekly in terms of, you know, the call wait times, excuse me. And so I just spoke to them this morning, the average time is a minute and 30 is what they're saying. So obviously, you're gonna have peak times that everyone calls, is probably with the time everyone wakes up and calls before they go to work. But overall, we're looking at about a minute to a minute 30 is what majority of the, of the wait time is. So.
That's the wait time before it gets picked up.
I mean, that's for, yeah, for them before they get to an actual rep to answer. So you call, you, you choose your option, and you're waiting before someone actually answers, and you get someone to deal with the issue.
Yeah, one, one thing I, I know a lot of times when some of the call centers you call will tell you that, say, you know, it's, we're roughly a, you know, three-minute wait time, or, I don't think you guys have anything on what the, the timeframe is, and I don't know if that's something you guys could add into your program.
You know, I could definitely bring that up. Like I said, we are in direct, I'm in direct communication with them, and that's actually, you know, a great idea to put on there. So I could bring it up to them and see if that's an option, to kind of give someone the idea of how long before they commit to it, right, how long the wait time's gonna be at that time.
Then, then the other option some of them has is, is say, if you don't want to wait, you can, you know, like, press something and it'll call you back when, when, you know, said, well, should have somebody call you back in 30 minutes.
Yeah, so that's, that's definitely, like I said, another great idea. We do have the option where you can send via email for those people who want to do that way instead of calling in. That gives a response without having to wait on the phone for hold times as well. But those are definitely ideas that I'll bring up in my conference calls with them.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? There are no other questions? Excellent. Want to declare public hearing open, want to open for public comment. I see several speaker, first speaker is Jan Marine Sakovic. Jan Marine Sakovic, going once.
I want to see Ms. Sakovic in the audience, she might have gone home at this point.
Okay. Jim Hensley, come on up. After Jim is Ed Owen.
Thanks for having me this evening. My wife and I have owned business here in Elk Grove for roughly 25, 30 years. I own Abby Flooring, she owns Hanson's Art Learning Center. We have nine acres over at 5275 Teagan Road. Historically, for the last 28 years, she's paid $5.38 for her storm drain fees. Roughly a year ago, it went up to $624.64, which is a, a big chunk for a daycare. That's, I don't know, 100 times. So she's been contacting Republic Services for roughly a year trying to resolve this issue, trying to figure out what it is. She was under the impression, as was Republic for a long time, that this was for garbage service. Because she didn't recognize the bill as being, being sewer, or being, oh, I'm sorry, drainage, because it was so exorbitant, she thought it was something different. Like I said, so did Republic. Eventually, they realized that what she's talking about there, which is kind of ironic that they, and I don't mean to throw them under the bus, but they can't read their own, their own bill and say, no, no, this is for storm drainage. One thing led to another, and she brought me into this like about a week ago after receiving a letter saying that we must attend this, or else we're gonna go, get a lien filed around the tax rolls, or whatever, whatever the case. So basically, that's my point of being here tonight, is that I was required to attend, and I would like to get together with them and say, I don't think it's fair that we're being taxed at a, suddenly at a commercial rate when we're over 98% undeveloped land. We don't have curbs, we don't have gutters, we don't have sidewalks, we only have a storm drain ironically enough. And I guess I just, I want some sort of fairness. If the rates went up, that's one thing, but I don't know what's happened there. I've had quite a few reasons why it went up. It was keyed in wrong, there was a transitional period between the city and Republic. Just here recently, Brittany across the street was really, really a big help. I think we've finally figured it out, is they've changed the classification of the property. Now, to me, we're, we're zoned RD5, you can't just arbitrarily change the classification of the property. It's gotta either be what the zoning is, or what you consider it to be- It's got to either be what the zoning is, or what you consider it to be, one or the other.
Jim, Jamie that was up here, she can probably meet with you and, and at least get the ball rolling of how we can address this.
I was just going to mention, I am aware of your account, so if you would like to speak with me either after the meeting or, you know, tomorrow, I'm aware of it, so we can, we can get a result.
And I appreciate that. If she's going to tell me that, that's the, that's the process, that's the bill, that's, I can't quote unquote City Hall, so.
We have another option.
Okay, and I, that, I guess that's what I'm here for, is to contest the bill as per your letter, so.
So let's do that, if you can have a conversation with Jamie, that'd be great. Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ed Owen, following Ed is Felicia Petrie.
It's me again. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Sue, and City Council members. I wasn't aware of this until I spoke to my friend Jim, that there's this, all of a sudden, he was telling me that his stormwater fees had went up from $6 to 600. So that got me to thinking, so I went back and looked at mine, I'm in Zone 1 also, and I know I pay $12.94 twice a year as part of the county tax. Why is Republic now being contracted to collect the stormwater fees and drainage fees? It's always been part of the county taxes, is it still going to be part of the county taxes? Or am I going to be getting an invoice from Republic, waste? It's kind of confusing, confusing, but it's kind of bothering me, because I'm retired and I don't have any money. So I think, why, the question I asked is, why were the fees suddenly going up? We have all this development going on, and all this new storm drains and everything happening. Then it dawned on me that back a few years ago, we purchased, purchased a $4 million piece of property for a soccer field that was going to be for pro soccer. That's never going to happen, the mall will be built before that. So I wonder, is the fee increase a way to put the funds back into the stormwater funds that originally was used to purchase the soccer, 100-acre soccer field? I know it's been paid back, somebody told me it was paid back, where did that money come from? Where did the money come to pay that money back? I mean, I'm a little confusing.
Developer fees.
Developers, but we keep giving developers all these breaks, and yet, all of a sudden, our sewer storm, storm drain sewer fees go up. So apparently, the developers aren't paying enough. So I think the developers better come to the table with a little more money if they want to build houses. They're making profits. I think if I was a civil engineer, I'd probably look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Following Mr. Owens, Felicia Petrie. Felicia, are you here? You left? All right. Okay, there are no additional speaker, want to close public comment, declare public hearing close, council deliberation in direction.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstention, next item.
That'll take us on to item 9.3, which is to consider two public hearings for the 51st annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1, and the 24th annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Cara Taylor Seaman, I'm Finance Analyst of the City of Elk Grove. Staff has received a request from the public for presentations on annexations, so I've prepared a brief summary for you this evening on the proposed action, if I can find it I'd like to start just briefly with a background on the special tax districts. The city maintains eight districts. There's requirements that are very specific for each project as to what's required for annexation, and those requirements vary according to the geographic location, and then how, what the project is going to do, whether it's residential or non-residential in general. The annexation into the appropriate districts is part of the approval, the project approval process, and then finally, there is an annual rate adjustment. The rates are reviewed every year and then brought to council for review. The project tonight for proposal is the Kelly Moore Paint Company. This slide shows the geographical location within the city boundaries.
Cara, we're not seeing your slides.
You're not?
No.
It's all black. Sorry, we have issues with these switching monitors. Did it bounce back up?
Okay, it's up now.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's a map showing where the project is located within the city. It's in, just off of Highway 99 in the southern part of Elk Grove. It is located on 3.75 acres, they're all non-residential, and there are two annexation requirements. One is for maintenance services, the CFD 2006-1, and the other is for stormwater drainage fee Zone 2. The, the CFD 2006-1 provides for maintenance of, and landscaping services throughout the city, and then the stormwater drainage maintains the stormwater system and network throughout the city. And with that, I'm open and available for any questions you may have.
Questions?
No, but excellent presentation, Cara.
Completely clear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you much. See, want to... All right, let's declare public hearing open, CFD 2006-1, open. Want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public are signed up to speak, want to close public comment, declare public hearing for 2006-1, close. Motion A1.
Motion A1's recommendation.
Oh, sorry. Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Right, tabulation of the ballot, please.
Of four possible votes, four affirmative votes for cast authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described, measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure, a resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion A2.
Motion A2. Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, motion A3.
Motion A3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance living and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 51, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Right, second public hearing, SWDF Annex 24, want to declare public hearing open for Annex, SWDF Annex 24, open public comment, I see that no members of the public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment, declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 24, close. Mr. Clerk, tabulation, please.
There is no majority protest of four possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each non-residential acre, four affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot, a resolution determining to levy assessments in the districts available for council consideration.
Move motion B.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Next item.
Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement, joint escrow instructions for the sale, and future development of property located at 9676 Railroad Street.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am Rachel Brown, I'm Economic Development Manager here at the City of Elk Grove, and I will be presenting information about the purchase and sale agreement for the development of 9676 Railroad Street. Let me start by giving you some quick background. City Council adopted the following goal and strategic imperative. The goal is to foster a vibrant and diverse economy in Elk Grove oriented towards growing jobs in targeted industries while also offering an array of residential choices, civic amenities, and entertainment options that attract businesses. The strategic imperative is to develop a strategy for an entertainment district in the Old Town area that incorporates the reuse plan for the Old Town Plaza. Last fall, in October of 2017, we acquired the property at 9676 Railroad Street for $420,000. Our goals there were to help act as a catalyst for additional private development in Old Town, leverage the city's investment that they've already spent in the Old Town Plaza, and capitalize on recent private investment in Old Town such as projects like School of Rock. We started talking with DNS Development around the same time we acquired the property. DNS Development is a reputable and experienced developer in the Sacramento region. They have a history of doing historic rehabilitation and mixed-use properties or expertise, and the principals are Stave Lebashi, Steve Lebashi and David Mary, and they're here tonight, if you guys end up having any questions of them, but hope my presentation answers all your questions. They have over 15 years' experience in real estate development, ownership, and operations. I am going to highlight a few of their projects just to showcase some of their skills that they've already shown through these projects. So something that isn't entirely open yet but is well underway, 700K Street, that's downtown, very close to the Golden One Arena. We got to tour that a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago. Really cool, they've taken some historic buildings that were really kind of blighted and shaved off a little bit of the back, and they've added new construction residential units at the back of the property. The front is mixed-use with a lower-level retail with some residential above it. Some tenants have already started moving into the property, so they're very close to the end stages at that project. 16 Powerhouse is another one of their projects, this one is a little different in that it was all new construction, but again, a mixed-use project where there's retail on the ground floor and luxury apartment residential space above, 50 units to be exact. I believe they were telling me during our tour of this property too, there had little or no vacancy, so it's a fully leased project, or they're for purchase, but... And then another project that's a little closer to our building that we have on Railroad Street, 14th and R, they completed this in spring of 2009, so it's been around almost 10 years. So they, it was a bread factory, they converted it, it's only a two-story building, the lower level is retail restaurants, and then the upper level is, have 12 loft homes. And then, this is a project that's south of us in Galt, the Brewster's Project, Jason was involved in that a little bit, and so this is a, another kind of like our Railroad Street building, an old building, historic, they renovated it. This building happens to be two stories, and the lower level's restaurant, and the second floor's banquet space. This is another one, this is a historic photo, I have another couple photos of the inside, but this is a fully residential project, they did, made stone, and so the inside looks real nice, you can see a couple pictures there. I included that just to continue to showcase their ability to do historic rehabilitation projects. So let's get to the project at hand. We have both private and public improvements as part of this development. The private improvements are going to have three phases. The first phase will be the building at 9676 Railroad Street, and they'll plan to renovate that into a restaurant space. And then Phase 2 will follow Phase 1, and will be the other brick building that a lot of people don't see as often, but it's further south on Railroad Street. They're looking to acquire that building currently. That's at 9699 Railroad Street. And so from Elk Grove Boulevard, you can't quite see the second brick building, from our plaza, the red brick building kind of blocks the view of the other one to the south. But Phase 3 will be a new construction, mixed-use residential project between the two brick buildings. And so I've kind of got a draft site plan here that highlights, on the left is the existing red brick building, and then on the far right is the other building, 9699 Railroad Street, that they're looking to acquire. And in the middle there, you see kind of a, kind of an M shape in the plan view of the new construction as they, this isn't final, but this is a draft concept of what that could look like. And then we're coming alongside with some public improvements. A lot of this is part of the Phase 2 plans for the Old Town Plaza, so we've, we've just put a timeline to those to go alongside the Phase 1, to help the Phase 1 project open up. Construct two new parking lots, reconstruct Railroad Street, and bring some utilities down to the site at 96, 9676. And then, as I said, the Old Town Plaza Phase 2, some of that work as well. This is a site plan to go along with our public improvements, it captures the large majority of that with Elk Grove Boulevard being on the left. The pavilion, which is the Phase 3, is still not identified, so even though this site plan kind of shows the outline of the pavilion, that's still not, that's not included in this development, and we haven't identified funds for that yet. And then this is the concept rendering that DNS has, has provided as a draft concept that we feel they're pretty on point with, capturing the historic feel of the building to the, this is from Railroad Street facing west, so a little bit south of our current Old Town Plaza area. To the right on the building, you can see a new patio structure, so that would be facing north. And here's some elevations that go along with that. And so then, on the upper right is that northern wall where there'll be some, some new openings to get people out to the patio space. And then this is a kind of a little bit more of a, a look back, a little, it's hard to see all of it, but it's intended to show you the extensive of all the project, the public and private work. So Elk Grove Boulevard at the left, and then at the far right-hand side is just showing the, the end of the property for the other, the second brick building at 9699. So the terms of the deal, one thing I'd like to point out is that you may have noticed as attachment to the staff report in the agreement, the agreement is with Echo Green LLC, and they are a real estate holding company that's affiliated with DNS Development, so those entities are related. So the terms of the deal, real quickly, we're going to sell the property to the developer for $380,000. We have done a recent appraisal, and that is what the, the value is showing at. The developer's going to pay the city a deposit of $40,000 upon opening escrow. And so we're going to do a money mortgage deal where the city will finance $340,000 of the purchase price through the money mortgage with the following terms here, which are outlined in the staff report as well. So this is my final slide, but quite literally the money shot. So private investment, we're estimating around $20 million by DNS. The public improvements, frontage improvements in Old Town Plaza is over $5 million, for a total of $26 million. And the public to private investment ratio is 1 to 4, so for every dollar spent by us at the city, $4 are being spent by the developer. With the two brick buildings, we're highlighting those as restaurant entertainment uses, we're estimating that the sales tax on an annual basis for those two projects combined will be about $96,000. And then with those two projects, the, the estimated jobs will be about 220. So probably run through that kind of fast, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment, Rachel, great job in spearheading this.
Thanks.
Really excited to see this go forward, and really appreciate DNS being here and taking part of it. Thanks.
Go ahead, Councilman Detrick.
Yeah, I agree, great job. I mean, I really liked the artist conception that they put together. You said the two gentlemen are here?
Yeah, we've got three people from DNS here tonight.
So do they have anybody lined up that they're, or is it still just in the concept of?
We don't have a tenant identified yet for the, for the Phase 1. In their experience, they're saying, let's start with the structural work and kind of start defining the space a little bit, and then the tenant has a little less, they don't have to use as much imagination to see the space for what it can be. And so they're eager to start with the planning process and get that going, so if, if all goes well with that, and maybe by the end of the year they submit for their structural plans they need to do for the building, we could start looking seriously at tenants.
Is it typically boutique restaurants?
They have a lot of relationships with regional restaurant operators, and we're hoping to tap into that, as well as some relationships that we've made through economic development, so we're hopeful that we'll, we'll be able to land a regional concept that will be not your typical chain, and something that'll be really fun for everyone.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Well, I'm excited, but you know, the feel of it, and I, just my gut feeling that Italian might be a good fit.
Something with brunch?[865.13][865.13](Laughter).
Just a thought. Thank you so much, appreciate it. At this point, want to open public comment? I see Randy Becker sign up to speak. Come on down, Mr. Becker.
Brick houses, Italian.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This area is very near to my heart, as it should be yours and yours.
So, do you have a conflict of interest?
By conflict of interest? No. No, I don't. However, we need to make sure that this building, or these buildings in this area, represents the history of this city, this town, not the city, the town. That, that has to be the number-one priority. Second of all, if this falls apart, for whatever reason, we need to be able to maintain that building back, meaning it shouldn't be bulldozed down just because we have a new owner. Thirdly, as someone who frequents the area, because I don't go too far from where I grew up, and most people in my shoes don't.
That's about as far west as you come?
Damn right it does. It's a, it's an exciting venture. It really is. However, traffic comes with it. That means there needs to be, traffic needs to be looked at. It's an easy right turn in there, but it's not an easy left turn leaving. And that means traffic's going to end up down Gage, down Kent, down Webb. That means there needs to be traffic lights. Elk Grove Boulevard at Kent, that needs to be addressed. That needs to be part of the plan. We're already having difficulties trying to get those citizens out on Elk Grove Boulevard because of East Elk Grove, because of the, the new housing developments, East Awatorman. So, we need to look at this not just as a potential development growth for the mayor's Italian restaurant. We need to look at it as a, as a new growth for the area. I'm excited about it, as long as it's done correctly. If it's done incorrectly, I don't think you want to hear my comments, because like I said, that area is near and dear to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Seeing that there are no additional members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
I've got a question. I don't know who the best person would be to answer relative to what Randy brought up. Is that building considered a historical building?
Not to the extent that it would be protected or any, any register that I'm aware of. If staff's aware of something, they can let us know.
It's not, okay. I thought, because if, if it had a historical registration, you wouldn't be able to tear it down anyway.
Not technically, but I think it's a contributing building, and so, our plan is to, their plan is to preserve it, and we're going to have the Historical Preservation Committee look at their drawings when they come through the planning process, so that will be, the hope is to preserve and, you know, maintain the building.
Right. And Randy, just so you know, that's one of the reasons we jumped on this, was because of the preservation aspect. So, I mean, it's, it's definitely important to all of us here at the city as well.
Vice Mayor.
Rachel, just for Mr. Becker's comment, too, another safeguard we have in place is we have the right to take, retake possession of the property.
Correct.
If it falls through.
Yes.
And is, can you outline, is it, any deal falls through, or is the...
I think we've, I had a note in my notes about breach of contract. I'm not sure to what degree if we're saying does not perform, and no development occurs, but we do have a clawback where we can get the property back.
Okay, so that'll help it from preventing it from being raised, as was mentioned. Thank you.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, and I'll just say that, you know, the early bird gets the worm, but the second mouse gets the cheese. And so, for their effort down at Brewster's in Galt, unfortunately, for whatever reason, that deal no longer made sense, but the building itself is still a beautiful building with a great restaurant, and I think the nicest performance space in the, in the South County upstairs. So, I thank you for what you did in, in saving that building. And to Mr. Becker's point, I think they're going to take this old Gibson Winery Warehouse Building and really kick it up to a higher and better use, and so I'm excited for it. So, with that, I'll, I'll move the resolution for the...
Excellent. Got a motion? Second, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Pose. Close public comment, all right?
Yep, all right.
Make it sure.
Yep, next item.
Takes on item 10.2, which consider resolution establishing guidelines and procedures for an event advertising signage pilot program and a resolution establishing fees for the event advertising signage pilot program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristin Nelson, your Public Affairs Manager, following up with you tonight on an item that has been in progress for a little while. You had provided some direction to Public Works to construct a couple of very large signs that will be promoting community events in the future. And a little while ago, you asked for the Public Affairs Department to be managing the process for that advertising, so I'm bringing that part of the project back to you tonight to have you take a look at some of the criteria and guidelines that we've set up for that process. As I mentioned, the signs are currently under construction. There's a picture that we got recently from the fabricators. These will be located in two places in town in high-traffic areas, along Laguna Boulevard at West Stockton Boulevard, and at Elk Grove Boulevard at Big Horn, and we are anticipating those to be completed in late summer, early fall. So, part of the signs, there's some various elements to it that you have approved this design in the past. Part of it is 18 fixed circular spaces, and those are intended to recognize various nonprofit service organizations. Staff did some extensive research, and we've looked at what other cities have done when they've used this kind of steel design. And we are proposing that these be nonprofit service organizations registered with the Secretary of State. They raise and distribute funds to other not-for-profit organizations or programs serving the Elk Grove community, the region, state, country, or global causes to appear on these spaces, and this would be a fixed installation. There are 18 circular seals available on the signs that are being designed or created. We have 11 candidates for organizations before you tonight for review. We are certainly open to any additional organizations that you would like to have included, but these were kind of fitting the criteria that we set out in our research and came up with. So, that is one of the action items we're looking for from you tonight, is some additional direction or approval on the list of proposed organizations for the service seals. The second part of it has to do with kind of the process for the advertising panels themselves. There are five interchangeable advertising spaces that are intended to promote community events, and there was some criteria that we worked with our legal counsel in creating to provide some protections for the look and feel and some of the content that would be presented on those panels. We have also designed some pre-approved design sign templates for our prospective advertisers that might help alleviate some of the concerns that are presented in the criteria above, but I won't go into detail, but it kind of is some common sense, what we don't want to have showing up on a sign. I also provided tonight a lovely sample from our vendor, Fast Signs, who will be producing, installing, and removing the sign panels, so that gives you a sense for what we could expect to see showing up there. Once these are installed, we expect that they'll be fairly popular, and our events and community organizations will want to advertise there. So, like we've done for the reservations on the Old Town Plaza, we have set up kind of a priority placement. So, with the first priority being any city events that are being presented, and second priority, other public agencies, so on and so forth. So, this does have the opportunity to extend to events that are being hosted within five miles of the city limits. So, it may include events that are just on our outskirts that might be of interest to the community. Our program and process, we tried to keep it simple, and we tried to keep it as automated as possible, because we do have a limited staffing resources to work on the project. But, an advertiser could potentially have their advertisement displayed for anywhere between two and six weeks, depending on how quickly they turn it in and how our schedule is looking. But it would be an online application process. We have set up a preliminary online form that we would activate with council's approval or install any changes that you ask for tonight. But it'd be fairly simple. They'd be asked to provide information about their organization, information about their event, and then select one of the design templates that we've provided, and they give us the information to fill in those spots. We would turn around and coordinate with them after we've done a review to make sure that they comply with all of the criteria and guidelines that have been approved, secure a payment through our web-based process, and then coordinate with our contracted vendor, Fast Signs, to have a panel designed and a proof prepared that we would send them for final approval. And then, it would go ahead, get installed, and then be displayed, so everybody knows about it. We are passing along a fee to them. This program is designed to be a net-zero budget impact, so we're passing on any direct costs for the production, but nothing more. And based on the work that we've done with Fast Signs, we're anticipating $300 for a set of two identical signs. So, we're trying to treat both signs as mere images, if you will, for simplicity's sake and consistency. So, that kind of wraps up the information I have for you tonight. We're looking for some direction on the service seals, any reactions you have to the criteria or guidelines, and approval of the fee.
Councilman Detrick.
Kristin, what, what do you do for somebody who has maybe a reoccurring event that happens to be the same, if it was the same date? You know, like there's the ones that are the first weekend of October. So, if those signs are already made, is there going to be another price, or is it going to be $300 regardless every time?
Well, it would be designed to be a one-time use, or they have the option to pick them up, but we won't be storing the signs for advertisers. They'll have the opportunity, once it comes down, within a period of about seven to nine days, to come in to either City Hall or our Fast Signs storefront. We're still working through those details. They can pick up the sign if they've already had it in the past, then, and they want to come back another year if it's an annual event, and they already have their panels, they can bring those into us. And as a pilot, we're still working through some of those things, but year one, they're all going to be new signs.
Okay, so that's something we need to negotiate, once you figure what that cost would be to, instead of making a new sign, what just a straight install would be?
Right, the fees right now are designed for, you know, a new production, install and removal.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all right. Thank you. And at this point, want to open for public comment. I see that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
With staff's recommendation, adopt the two resolutions of the staff's recommendations.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? All right, next item.
Last item is item 10.3, which is designation of voting delegate and alternates to the 2018 League of California Cities Annual Conference. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. This item is a matter of business for the city of Elk Grove, is a standing member with the League of California Cities. Every year, the League of California Cities has its annual conference and actual business meeting in September. It oscillates in location between Northern and Southern California. This year, it's in Long Beach, California. This action is just a request by the League of California Cities that as a standing member, you get, the city of Elk Grove gets a vote in any of the business matters that come before the league, so the request is to designate that delegate who would be able to attend the annual conference, and then any alternates as well.
Hey, thank you, Jason. No members of the public signed up to speak. Want to open and close public comment? And counsel deliberation and direction. So, I've kind of checked, and I think I'm just going to go ahead and then push forward Pat Hume and, as the voting delegate, and Stephanie Nguyen as the alternate.
I'll second that.
All right, got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? All right, done. Thank you. Let's adjourn this meeting at 8:44 PM. Thank you.